Called order the regular city council meeting for today, October 20th. I would ask if you have a cellphone or similar device, if you could put it on silent so that we don't hear your exciting ringtone at some point. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Lessen.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item three is the mayor's report. I have a proclamation which is for October 28th, which is National First Responders Day. And so this is for our Public Works firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 folks, paramedics, and other emergency personnel. And I'm going to be presenting this out at the Public Works Building on the 28th. So I'm not going to read it in its entirety tonight, but know that we are very grateful and very proud of these folks and the work that they do in our community under trying circumstances in many cases. As far as activities since the last meeting, I attended the Economic Development Association of North Dakota Conference here in Minot. It was well-attended and well-done. I also attended, as a member of Task Force 21, the retirement of Chief of Staff of the Air Force David Alvin out in Washington DC. I joined the Minot Air Force Base leadership at the MSU game on the 11th, which they won, which was Military Prairie Warrior Bowl. I had an interview with the Dakotan. I presented a proclamation for Chamber Appreciation Day. Have closed out on a couple of buyouts on acquired properties for our flood protection. And of course, had my one-on-one with city manager Tom Joyce. And just this afternoon at four o'clock, for those of you who weren't aware of it, I had the pleasure of swearing in six new Minot Police Officers who have completed their training and are joining the force. So congrats to the PD and the Chief Frye for expanding our officers. And with that, I'd stand for any questions that the council may have. Seeing none, we'll move on to the report section. Item four, first up, city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My report and that of department heads is included in the agenda packet. If you have any questions, I stand for those. With no questions, I'd like to go ahead and introduce our Executive Director, John Van Dyke of the Central Dakota Metropolitan Planning Organization. There will be a presentation this evening of the Transportation Plan Project. John?
Thank you, City Manager Joyce, Mayor Janser, city council members. So I'm John Van Dyke. I'm the Executive Director for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. As you might be aware, we've been working on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for the last 18 months. It's been a pretty involved process, including all the member jurisdictions. That includes, of course, the city of Minot, city of Burlington, city of Surrey, and then Ward County as well. So tonight, we're here to provide a presentation overview of the project. And then ultimately, what that'll lead to is we're requesting a letter of support, at least as far as the process goes. And then the respective TAC members that are part of this process. So that would be Lance Meyer in City Engineering, Doug Dietrichson from your planning department, and then also Brian Harinka that speaks on behalf of Minot City Transit would review the broader document, provide comments, and then re-present to this body for approval of the letter of support. Otherwise, I'm just going to go ahead and hand it over to Joel Mann with Bolton and Mink. And try to limit this presentation to no more than 90 minutes. Just kidding. It's going to be 20 minutes, and he's aware that he's going to kind of push through this. I also want to announce, though, that there will be a formal public hearing in a few days in these city council chambers. So October 23rd at 4:30 PM at the Policy Board meeting, we'll open it up for the public to provide comment, if they'd like to provide that comment in person. But this is the last of our member jurisdiction roadshow, if you will, where we're providing the presentation, kind of highlighting projects of the local jurisdiction. And with that, I'll hand it over to Joel.
Great. Thank you, council members. Thank you, John. I'm Joel Mann with Bolton and Mink. I'm a transportation planner based in our Minneapolis, Minnesota office. And I've been working with John and the MPO on development of this plan, and we are glad to present this to you this evening. As John mentioned, we'll go through this pretty quickly. There's a lot of information here, but it moves pretty fast, and we want to leave some time for questions and answers from you. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the plan to start, and then I'll walk through pretty much the planned chapters, so that you see the sequence of how the planning process happened and how this was developed, but where we ended up with an overall plan that will guide transportation decision-making in the Minot region, especially for funds coming from the federal government for the next 25 years. So it's a long-range plan, looking further out. It takes an approach that is the entire MPO planning area, what we call the Metropolitan Planning Area, which is a subset of Ward County. It's basically the part of the county between the western edge of Burlington and the eastern edge of Surrey. Doesn't quite go north of the Air Force Base, but it's what we call the urbanized area of the county. But this plan results in what we call a fiscally constrained plan, or list of projects. And that means that basically, we can afford this plan, and we are going to go ahead and recommend projects that fit within our expected transportation funds and revenues to come over the next 25 years. We don't limit it to mentioning any other projects that aren't in that fiscal constraint, but we do have a plan that says, with what we're expecting to get, here's what we can afford. So there's a prioritization process to get to that point that we'll talk about in a moment. But this plan takes a look at multiple travel modes. It goes into several different technical analysis areas to support recommendations with data and a strong technical approach. But most importantly, I think it is rooted in community perspective and community feedback. We have a three-phase engagement process that's a part of a much longer plan effort that you see on the diagram here. And we're actually still in that engagement process right now, technically, with this presentation this evening in a public setting like this and a public comment period that is still active through, a week from today, through the 27th of October. So we had three phases of our engagement. The first phase was really kind of setting the stage for the project and for the Minot community to understand just what is this plan and what is an MPO? What is the role of this organization within the community and what do we do? So this was a time to talk about bigger aspirational transportation topics and objectives that people have. And the big takeaways for us through this process were that people want their transportation system to do more than just the kind of core moving people and goods kinds of things that we think about. They want the system to be designed safely and promote transportation safety, but they want the system also to better connect the community and to promote economic development and the continued prosperity of the Minot region. The second phase of engagement is where we got into specific ideas that the plan might present. That's specific capital projects or priority corridors or focus areas. So we got more detailed responses in the surveys and public dialogue that we had during the second phase, because we had some concrete ideas to present to people. And we came back with an understanding of what the top priorities are for the community, but also the way that the community would like to see transportation resources used. And that is not just in building new roads and transportation projects. It's in protecting what we have, which is very important, because there's already an extensive transportation network in the region. So we had kind of a 50/50 response, that those were equally important, which is good for us to know. That really guides the direction of the plan's recommendations later on. And that third phase that I mentioned that we're in now, it's principally the public comment period that is active, but we are giving a series of presentations. Like John said, this evening is the last one that we're presenting to the member jurisdictions. And this goes into a series of presentations to the MPO's Policy Board and Technical Advisory Committee, that if they have no further comment beyond how we address the public comments from this October period, we will move the plan into approval and adoption into November and December of this year. I'll give a recap on the specific dates of that later toward the end. But for now, I want to just give a summary of the plan's chapters. This plan drew on a lot of great planning work that's happened in recent years in the Minot region. It set a lot of new ideas, but gave us a lot of grounding and information to build on. But those past plans also define some very clear and strong priorities, especially for the city of Minot. And the Broadway Corridor has been a top priority for a while. It had its own study about five years ago. And then we gave some additional work and analysis attention to that corridor through this planning process. But we took a look at safety and where there are challenging corridors and intersections from a safety standpoint throughout the region. We took a look at all different travel modes. This isn't just about cars and freight. This is about everybody and different ways that we move around the region. We considered the transit service that the city is currently operating through Minot City Transit, although I will note that there is a separate transit development plan effort. Those are kind of a technical concept within the world of how transit gets funded. So that's an effort that's a complement or sort of a sibling plan to this one that is currently underway and has not yet concluded. So there will be more specific transit-based recommendations to come out of that. But the engagement process, like I said before, really set our understanding that there are some broad community goals in Minot about what transportation should do and what the transportation investments we make should yield in terms of return for the community. And they go into things like safety. They go into things like economic development. So it's a good way for us to think about choosing projects and choosing recommendations in a plan like this that can meet all of those goals and objectives. But we also looked at a series of technical topics as well, based on things like safety, based on traffic operations, the condition of infrastructure today. And we considered those technical needs right alongside the community priorities and desires that were expressed through the engagement project. So we're looking at both of them. We're looking at the ways the community wants to see the transportation system evolve, but the actual physical incontrovertible needs that come from, you know, looking at things like where crashes happen and the condition of pavement and infrastructure, and where we have gaps in our network that don't allow us to connect. We considered both of those together to come up with a series of projects. We also looked out into the future, because this is a long-range plan. So we wanted to understand, using analysis and modeling tools that are standard of planning like this, what would happen if we didn't make investments? How would the region continue to grow? And where would our deficiencies be in the transportation network? That gives us a series of challenges to meet and recommendations to make to address those challenges. So we look at, you know, the relationship of the future roadway network with not building out transportation or investing, and what we do if we do invest and how those perform. And that leads us to the plan. We call this a fiscally constrained plan, because as much as we would love to do everything and bring every idea that came forward in this process to fruition, we just don't ever have enough funds for that. It's kind of a common refrain in transportation around the country. But we have over 90 project ideas that were proposed as candidates for this plan. Those result altogether in a cost of around $500 million. We'll go through it in more detail in a second, but we have about $220 million of typical transportation revenue coming in from the federal government to meet that. So we know that we're going to have to do some work to pare that down, to have a project list that fits within our fiscal reality and what we're expecting to bring in. But that process resulted in a series of projects by kind of major categories and types. We went through a series of steps that let us get to that, you know, constrained list. And the first of them was that we already have some projects that have federal funding programmed and spoken for. With the MPO being a new organization and taking on this role of programming federal funds for the region, you're kind of picking up the mantle from North Dakota Department of Transportation who does that today. So they had already programmed out federal funds for the next few years. Those, by default, just kind of fold into this plan. But we take a series of steps to look at how to think about those midterm and long-term projects through to 2050. And we considered the public input that we received and the priorities stated there, the projects that were priorities for local governments like the city. Because when you've got a priority, you're going to stay committed to that. And the portions of the funding and the support that the local government needs to provide, there's a reasonable commitment to that. So that's going to, you know, make that project a higher priority for the whole region as well. But then we look at a series of transportation needs, like I mentioned, thinking about safety, thinking about operations, thinking about infrastructure condition. Where the needs overlap, and we have many needs in a single corridor, that's an example of a project that would rise to the top of a priority list, because it is addressing so many different challenges all at once. It's a good project that should be funded and that moves into that list. But we take a look at the different funding sources. The MPO is going to be programming four kind of major funding pots or categories that come from the federal government and pass on to North Dakota through the NDDOT. So we're taking a look at those and figuring out the best ways to align those funding sources with projects that are eligible for them. There are some specialized ones. There's one that we call the Transportation Alternatives Program that's really about non-motorized travel. There's one that we call the Highway Safety Improvement Program, or H-SIP in this slide, that's about improving safety on the transportation network. So these are eligible for certain project types, and we try to match them up, but we try to do it as efficiently as we can to get as many projects for the region within what we have forecast. And what this results in is a transportation network that fills in many of Minot's priorities. We're zooming in here on the central part of the city. And some of those priorities, including the Broadway Corridor, are reflected in this fiscally constrained plan. The higher priorities, we believe, we're going to be able to meet at the first opportunities to implement them. So like I said, the next several years are kind of spoken for in terms of funding that's already been programmed. But the Broadway project is one that could advance at the first opportunity. You need to go through some engineering and environmental documentation on a big project like that. But this is one that we'd look to bring into construction at our first real opportunity, which would be the middle of the next decade. But the north and south ends of Broadway, especially around the US2 interchange, are really kind of the top priorities here. But we also have several other streets. Minot has a lot of four-lane streets that don't carry the traffic volumes to really need that four-lane design. And they actually work more safely if you put a two-way left turn lane in and bring those to three-lane streets. There are several of those in the project list that fit into the fiscally constrained plan. But then there are also corridors that support other forms of travel. So it was always a priority of the community in that Broadway study to have bicycle and pedestrian travel there, but no real space in Broadway itself to fit those modes safely. So that study looked at some alternative parallel corridors that are also able to be funded through that fiscally constrained plan. And then the middle section of Broadway is one that still fits, but maybe further out in a longer timeframe of the plan. Anything that doesn't fit in that fiscally constrained plan, we keep in the plan as a candidate, but we call it an illustrative plan or kind of an aspirational plan, that it's there if there are other opportunities for funding that come forward, we might be able to advance some of these or advance some of our other projects sooner. We don't program out what we call discretionary funds or funds that are through competitive grants or other kind of special sources. We only program out what comes to the state of North Dakota every year from the federal government and what Minot would get through its share of the state's population. There are plenty of other funding sources out there, and to be eligible for them, you need to be in a long-range plan like this, which is why we have this illustrative plan. But the plan's also recommending a series of other studies and other things to explore so that Minot is ready for its transportation evolution, but also ready for how this plan will evolve itself. This is a plan that doesn't last all 25 years, written in stone and unaltered. This plan gets updated every five per the requirements of the federal government and the MPO. So these are studies that start teeing us up for the next generation of issues that we want to dive into in further detail when that plan gets updated. And they explore a variety of transportation topics and kind of special areas of study to explore. But I want to conclude this with talking about the overall financial component of this, where we kind of spell out what that revenue forecast looks like. This is a table, a lot of, you know, numbers here of what's expected to come in in terms of revenue around these different federal funding sources, broken down differently, shown here. You've got about $240 million coming into the region for more highway-based funding sources, and about $74 million coming into the region for transit, which is a combination of operating assistance for the transit service, but capital assistance for replacing buses, you know, building new facilities, that sort of thing. When you look at the local level, Minot is generating around $187, $190 million over that 25-year period, based on the amount that you've been spending on a yearly basis over the last several years. We're just kind of forecasting this out. And this represents everything. This is not, you don't have that to spend, you know, on these big projects like this. This is for maintenance. This is for local streets. This is for kind of everything to do with transportation. But overall, to balance out what is in this fiscally constrained plan, the region has to provide a share of it. When you get federal funding for transportation, you don't get 100% of it. There's usually a requirement for a local match of 20% of a project's total cost. So to meet that local match, the region needs to come up with around $79 million over that 25-year period. You are, you know, you have just under $500 million of local revenue coming in, but keep in mind, there is a lot to do to maintain the existing system. So kind of looking at where some maintenance costs have been and expenditures in the past few years, if we forecast this out, you know, there's potentially a pretty large maintenance bill. You've been keeping up with it pretty well. We feel like you can continue to do that with the funds that are coming in as a region. And this is, again, this is all of, you know, the planning area. This is the county and the city and Burlington and Surrey as well. But overall, you know, don't forget about maintenance being a high priority. And in thinking about future budgeting, keep in mind that there is a balance between contributing to these new projects and maintaining what you have, even if it's, you know, local streets that aren't part of the federal system. So to recap here, this is our last presentation this evening to the member jurisdictions, and we'll be moving on with our public comment period, where if there is no more need for further public comment, if the Technical Advisory Committee determines that we've been able to address all the comments from this current period, we will move forward with the plan going to adoption in December, at the December 9th meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee. So over the next couple of months, we'll be wrapping up and addressing those comments and having this plan finalized and adopted by the end of the year. So I want to thank you again for listening, for, you know, all the support. Staff, Lance Meyer especially, as a member of the Technical Advisory Committee, has been very helpful with this. But we thank you again for letting us present, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for the presenters? I don't see any. So, John, good job. And like you said, I get to see this again soon, so.
Get to. That's the key word, "you get to." Thanks, Joel. And thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you very much. City manager, you have anything else for us?
Just one comment. We had, we concluded our community satisfaction, citizen satisfaction survey ended on Friday, the 17th. We had a little over 1,200 responses, so we really appreciate the citizens giving us their input. Again, that's one piece of valuable input as we move forward in our plan here. But as a reminder, we had just a little over 400 two years ago. So we get our first report from the contractor on Friday, and more to follow with that once we get that input.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to section five, which is consent items. These are items that will not be discussed individually unless somebody asks for one of them to be pulled for individual discussion. So I have been asked to pull item 5.16, but other than that, there'll probably be a motion to pass them all together. Is there anyone who wishes to have any additional items pulled from the consent list? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the remaining items. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
And that takes us to under consent items, to item 5.16, which is the donation funds from Minot Junior Golf for CAC training for the PD. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve, discussion. Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this one out specifically, even in tonight's consent agenda, we had some generous donations, and those are all very appreciated. But 5.16 was a donation made But 5.16 was a donation made by Ron and Carol Geffrey and the Minot Golf Association, and it is to pay for some training that we had to pull out during the budget process. And the training is for crimes against children, and it would be for police department staff to attend. Those are hard decisions that we have to make, and so it was really nice to see and very appreciated that this couple and the Minot Golf Association would step up and give us that donation. So, thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
We're now moving to Section 6, which is our action items. The first item is 6.1, which is the Regional CO2 Storage Project, which is coming back for further action, based on previous action that the council took. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the item as presented. Is there any discussion? Alderman, bless them.
Yeah, and Jason, if you wouldn't mind, just a real quick explanation again, Jason. We talked about this one before. Am I correct that Jamestown has now joined this as well? Was that, I didn't remember that, but maybe I'm just remembering two steps back.
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam. Yeah, that's true. Jamestown, City of Bismarck, and the City of Minot, the three. So most of us on the western side of North Dakota, we get our CO2 for the water treatment plant from Dakota Gasification down in Beulah. So every year, they go down for maintenance for about six weeks, and we have to source CO2 out of Wyoming and further away, and our costs skyrocket when we have to get those. So the City of Bismarck kind of championed this effort. They got a cost share from the Department of Water Resources, and then the other three communities now, we're sharing that local share.
Yeah, if I can continue, Mr. Mayor. So, Jason, I think that, you know, this is the kind of great work that our staff does all the time. And I think just going out and finding a deal like this, working with other municipalities, is a great way to do that. So I just want to say thanks for doing that and making this kind of stuff work, because I think it's the kind of thing that helps us bend the curve a little bit and keep us on the right side of the cost structure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Seeing none, let's cast our votes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Item 6.2 is an ordinance amendment to increase the Civil Service Commission from three to five members and clarify the removal process. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the item. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blessam.
I guess I have a question on this one, and maybe for the city manager. We don't have a memo with this one. I'm not, I don't understand where this one's coming from. You know, I think we've maybe run into some times when we've been a little short, even just with attendance, and so this could make sense just for quorum purposes, but I'm not seeing anything here that kind of describes that unless I missed it.
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam, you were spot on. That's exactly what it is. Well, I served as the interim HR director earlier this year and sat in with the commission. There were times that one of the members would be absent for one reason or another, and then, you know, you essentially then had, you know, other than the chair would have to make a motion, then, you know, it was a little clunky, for lack of better terms. So we just thought if we added a couple more members to the commission, that would be helpful and make it a more effective commission overall.
Further discussion. Seeing none, we appear to be ready to vote. Let's cast our votes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Next item is 6.3, which is the Third Street Bridge Repairs Engineering Task Orders 2 and 3. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Move and seconded. Seeing none, we will go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
We're moving on to item 6.4, which is the Memoranning, or the MOU for Skill Bridge Program. What are your wishes, council?
Move approval.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Any discussions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Item 6.5 is a alcohol ordinance comprehensive update. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think when we started talking about doing some of these comprehensive updates and everything, I guess in my mind, I thought it was going to make it a little bit clearer to everybody what we wanted to do, and some of the things that we put in here seem to muddle that a little bit. One of them I'm going to use as an example is the changes we're making to the supper club recommendations. So we're removing the 150-seat requirement for a supper club liquor license. So in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how now, besides the annual end-of-year reporting for food sales, how it's different from a regular liquor license. Because now, and I'm not picking on anybody, but I'm going to use Qdoba as an example. Qdoba has a beer and wine license. If we remove the seat requirement, they can say, hey, we want a supper club license, and then they can start serving tequila with lunch every day. So I, in my mind, that confuses the whole situation for me for a supper club. I mean, supper clubs are supposed to be restaurants. I believe that's why that ordinance or that license was established, was for restaurants that serve more food. Now we're removing the 150-seat requirement, and we're also, you don't have to serve more food than booze, you just have to serve food in an equal portion. And, you know, again, to me, that confuses the whole situation. I don't see the difference in between that license and a regular liquor license. I mean, other than they have to report at the end of the year that they sold as much food as they did booze. I thought our purpose with the supper club license was, hey, I'm going here to eat food, and we're going to have a drink with it, not I'm going here to have a drink and maybe get some food with it. So that, to me, was a little bit confusing. I'm not sure that I can vote for some of these changes the way they are. I wanted to see more clarity, and like I said, for me, it was confusing.
Further discussion. Alderman Blessam.
Yeah, one other, I guess, question for the council, and we could handle this as a separate motion or as an amendment, I suppose. One of the things that I, and Paul, please tell me if you guys worked through this during the discussions, but one of the big things that I, where I think that we're off in our current layout is off-sale isn't really pulled out. It's, you know, right now, Target holds the exact same license as the lamplighter. That, to me, seems very strange. Like, that's one, and I, you know, as I've thought through it, there's a lot of ramifications if you try to fix it. And I know that that's where it gets really complicated, and you work through what will be our next item. You got to work through that whole process to get there. But is there, I guess, should we be having any thought? That was one of the questions laid out in the memo, was should we address that now? I mean, we can certainly take any of this up at any time that we choose to, but is there, was there any thought given to that and whether we should rectify that question right now?
So, I mean, Mr. Mayor, so you're discussing the fact that an off-sale license, whether it's a liquor-serving establishment, an on-sale license, holds the same license as a liquor store.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that was discussed, and the reason that it wasn't maybe drawn out or pulled out in this was because of the next item on the agenda, because at one point, the committee's work had kind of stalled out due to that question, due to, you know, is there an interest in removing the cap? So that's when the committee actually kicked it up to this body here, and the council voted unanimously to pursue, you know, the research into removing the cap. So that's why there wasn't a great deal of effort put into that concept, because if the direction was given that, yes, there's an appetite to remove the cap, it seemed somewhat, you know, solution in search of a problem, trying to, you know, draw that out, pull that out, so.
That makes sense.
Alderman Fuller.
And I guess to what was just being said there, but if we don't remove the cap, my question becomes then, the supper club license is basically a backdoor to the regular retail license, right? You've removed the requirement that you have to have 150 seats, there's no cap on it by population for supper club licenses, and they have all the same rights and rules as a regular retail license, they just have to show you at the end of each year that they sold food with it. So what, yeah.
Just to maybe help with some of these, we did look at the definition of a restaurant, and we made a bit of a change there, where we said it had to at least include an indoor grill for consumption on the premises, food and alcohol. You're correct. All supper club licenses have to sell more food than liquor, at least 50% or more. But we also, and it is something that the committee talked about, the supper club license says you have to quit selling alcohol within an hour of the full kitchen closing. So the council could always say, well, what do you consider a full kitchen? Can you go to a restaurant and order a steak at 1:00 a.m. and get a beer with it? So, I mean, there are some things you could add in to that license if you would like to separate it a little bit more.
Okay. And I appreciate that, Michaela, I guess, but like I was saying, like, if we remove the seating requirement, right? That's where I'm having a sticking problem here, the seating requirement. What is the difference then, other than having to report that we sell food and, yes, close down an hour, within an hour of the full kitchen closing down? But do we, have we established what, full kitchen closing down? Does that mean you won't serve me appetizers past a certain place, or is that the kitchen is still open, or a certain time? Is the kitchen still open then?
I guess that's a thing that we would like direction from council, as to how you would like a full kitchen to be established. Is it a set of late-night appetizers? Is it, you literally have to have the full menu? And then it's a discussion also with the police department, you know, is that something that we're going to enforce? If we're doing checks, is that going to be something we're checking, that we can order off a full menu, if we define that?
Well, and that's where my previous comment kind of comes back here. Like, I thought this was supposed to be clearer for all of us. There's still a ton of questions that we have to answer and details that we have to put in this. Shouldn't we be doing that before we vote on it? It is, in my mind.
Well, and just to remind council, this is brought to you as a draft, as a possible first reading. There's always a second reading. There's only so much staff can do without more direction. So if it's something you want a table and give us more direction to come back with on certain items, we can definitely do that, too.
Yeah, or Alderman Fuller, if you have, if you want to offer an amendment to the, you know, I guess, I don't know that we want to wordsmith through this whole thing ourselves, but, you know, I mean, but certainly, we don't have to pass it just because it's in front of us, and if we want to, if we want to address something, well, that we don't agree with, then we can, we can do that by multiple means.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, can I just bring a point of order quick? And for the city attorney, I think Steph is on, or Nick, if you want to answer one or the other. What we have in front of us tonight, as I'm reading this, I don't read this as a first reading on an ordinance, or I read this as giving feedback on a draft. So in my mind, we've got a three-step process starting tonight at a minimum, right? Because we are not, this is not a first reading.
It does not.
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam, Attorney Stahlheim is online, I believe she'd be available to provide some input on that, but I believe your understanding is correct.
Yes. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can.
Perfect. Okay. So what you have in front of you right now is the product of over, well over a year of work, with city staff collaborating with the Alcohol Ad Hoc Committee. So it's been going on for a long time, and it is a bear of an ordinance. So what you have attached are two documents. One's an outline that sets forth big picture how we've rearranged the ordinance, and the other is where we're currently sitting with the proposed ordinance itself, which proposes repealing and replacing all of Chapter 5 that currently exists. Usually when you see those ordinances come through with the existing ordinance language, they have strike-throughs and an underline underneath the new language. But here, this rewrite, it's extensive enough that the red lines just started to become excessive. So what we're proposing with this is that we would just completely replace Chapter 5 with the proposed language here. And this is just a status check. Right now, it doesn't sound to me like we have some concerns with it right now. So, I mean, I certainly wouldn't expect you to pass this on first reading if you have some discomfort with it, but it's been going on for a long time. So we wanted to make sure that we checked in and showed you guys where we're currently sitting. And there's still a lot of items in here that were discussed by the committee that are not currently in this draft. So I believe, as Alderman Blessam mentioned, the off-sale license, we pulled that out because we didn't want to add that language in this draft if we were going to consider movement somewhere with the cap. So where we're currently sitting with this ordinance is a very, very big-picture mild rewrite, I would say. We tried to kind of rearrange everything in an order that we thought made more structural sense, but if it's not, if we're not going in a direction that a majority of the council wants us to go in, we'd like to get that feedback now so that we can make appropriate changes for when we bring it back to you for review. So bottom line, if the council's not comfortable with the current draft, we certainly wouldn't expect you to move to approve it on first reading. Rather, we'd prefer that you just provide feedback in the form of amendments so that we know where a majority of the council would like us to go with this.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
So I'll bring an amendment to Alderman Fuller's point here about bringing the language back around seating requirements for supper clubs, because, so that's my amendment.
Second.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor.
Move and second, Alderman Blessam.
And so my thought here, and I think Qdoba's a good example, you know, we're going to hear on the next item a lot of stuff about competition and the market and everything that goes along with that. What this does, it serves very directly to suddenly say, look, as long as you're over 50%, you can sell, you can sell mixed drinks. If you want to bring a bunch of competition, let's open up every fast food place to a supper club license. We're going to add a lot of competition really quickly at that point. So I think, I think we need to return that language back in to make sure that we're being, you know, definitionally correct about what a restaurant is.
Further discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, which is to retain the seating
The motion passed unanimously.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I have is, I guess, basically just kind of a cleanup item. In 512, 6A, it talks about supper club. And in A, it has the definition of a supper club as 5-1KK, which is actually 5-1LL in that document.
Okay. Maybe that can just be noted as such.
Yeah. Yep. And then I would just, I guess a concern I have, and I brought it up to Steph a little bit in an email, I'm just a little bit confused. Okay, we have a retail beer and wine license, and then under that, we have a specialty restaurant wine sale and a specialty restaurant beer sale. All of those kind of really go together, but under 4, the specialty restaurant, the wine sale, if you go down to, it's the II, "A specialty restaurant wine sale license shall not serve or allow to be consumed any other alcoholic beverage on that license premises except beer," as authorized under subsection 5C1. So that, how I read it, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, is if you have that specialty restaurant wine license, you can serve wine and beer. that specialty restaurant wine license, you can serve wine and beer. If you go down to specialty restaurant beer sale and kind of the same restriction, a specialty restaurant beer sale license is permitted to sell wine only if a separate specialty restaurant wine sale license is obtained, which is the other one. So to me, those two are confusing, and I don't, not sure why they can't just be combined. Where if you want to sell wine in your specialty restaurant, you can also serve beer. You get one license that takes care of them all. I just, I think it would simplify it in my point, so.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Further discussion. Is there anything else in here we want to? So, uh, maybe, uh, I think the the original motion was to pass this. And in discussion, it seems as though we have, uh, kind of gotten to where we want to maybe get it reworked before we go to that step. Who is the motion maker? Or? Go, go ahead, City Clerk.
Just to kind of see how council is going as, as a clarification for, you know, some of this. I think that your Alderman Samuelson, that we could probably combine the specialty restaurant wine and beer license. If on the next item, um, there's a decision about whether or not we're going to discuss removing the cap or not, it would be my suggestion to maybe go down to just a retail beer and wine license and and remove the specialty, um, restaurant ones altogether. The one thing that, because I I just looked, I don't believe I have any separate specialty wine-only licenses. The one that I was thinking of actually has a winery license, so we could look at that, um, further for you, sir.
Can, I mean, is, can somebody articulate the rationale for what's currently in the, in print? I mean, what, what is the, you know, what's the reason for having a specialty restaurant beer or wine license for that matter? I guess, anybody know where that came from or why we have that?
Well, Steph has her hand raised, too, but I I can try and help. Maybe she's got more information on it, too. Um, a specialty restaurant license doesn't allow for off-sale. Where a retail license, whether, you know, retail beer and wine or specialty restaurant beer and wine, retail allows for off-sale, so that that's the main distinct difference. Um, I would think that if if we wanted to combine, we would just make it be an on and off-sale license.
Okay.
And then the owner can just choose how they want their business plan to be, because they do have to show if it's a restaurant, fifty percent or more food sales.
Understood, okay. Uh, thank you. Steph, you're, Steph, your hand up, it looks like, go ahead.
Yes, so Mayor Janser and Council, um, this is existing languages in the ordinance. So we have retail beer and wine, we have specialty restaurant wine, and we have specialty restaurant beer. Um, and I I con- I concur with Alderman Samuelson. I think it's, and and Michaela, I think it is a little condoluted. There is a fee distinction, um, here as well, in addition to the off-sale component that Michaela mentioned. So retail beer and wine, which allows for on-sale and off-sale per ordinance, the fee is nine hundred and fifty dollars. The specialty restaurant wine sale is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then the specialty restaurant beer sale, which allows the wine sale as well, it says that one is six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So there is a, there's a fee component that's to this as well, but I think for ease of reference, I I would concur, I'm of the opinion that I think it would be easier to just have retail beer and wine for nine fifty and allow on and off sale. But there is a fiscal component there, too. It's it's a policy question for the council.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Steph. Alderman Blessam.
Mr. Mayor, and I I guess another point of order, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on the motion that we have in front of us. The recommend, normally when we have a memo, we have a recommendation that lays out exactly what we're approving. This memo actually does not have that. The options, the additional options, we have that. So the motion, as I would understand it right now, would be to accept the recommendations of the Alcohol Ordinance Committee as represented in the draft. And then now we've amended, we've amended it once. But what we're doing then is directing staff to bring that back for a first reading at at the next meeting. Is that?
Correct.
Is that what everybody's in agreement that we're doing here? Okay.
Whoever, whoever made the motion and whoever seconded it, if you agree with that, we're fine, I would say.
I don't think.
Okay. Okay, then, um, further discussion. Anything else?
So, Mr. Mayor, so do, for what I talked about, do we need a motion for that?
I I guess it wouldn't hurt to give staff direction to go that way.
To be fair with this being separated, if if you're talking about the specialty restaurant, I think we, let's get to the next item, see where council sits on the cap or not, because there'll, there'll be other questions, such as the off-sale license um, and things that we kind of want to cover there. If if you're not interested in removing the cap, we ask to redraft an off-sale license and things like that. So licensing, I think we can talk about on the next one. This was mainly for any other items, um, such as I, you know, the special event permit process, the application process. The committee added a whole thing on mandatory server training, um, things like that. That kind of are separate from the license types.
So maybe you want to kind of tuck this beer wine stuff, uh, away and we'll deal with it?
That would be my recommendation is to deal with it on the next one, once the the council kind of decides how they want us to move forward with the license types.
Okay.
Steph's got her hand up.
Very well. Steph, uh, you're recognized.
I I actually would appreciate a motion on it. If the motions that a, a majority of the council would concur with consolidating retail beer or the specialty restaurant licenses into just the retail beer and wine license, then I can, I can prepare that for the next reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion on behalf of, uh, the council to go ahead and combine those.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to, uh, to do that, uh, combine those. Just further discussion. Okay, seeing none, let's cast our votes.
I'm, I'm coming, hold on. The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, anything further? Okay, so we have a, we have a motion to get this back to staff for rework and, uh, bring it back to us when what we've directed is completed. Is there any discussion? Seeing, oh, Stephanie is, uh, weighing in. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Janser. Um, one other question I have is, so is about fees, which I think this might be a good spot to to bring it up in the agenda. Um, so currently underneath our ordinances, the fees are set by ordinance. And in a lot of other areas in our ordinance, the fees are set by an annual resolution that comes before the council during the budget season. Some, so that's a question I would put before the body, is if that is something, and you don't have to make a decision tonight either. But would the council prefer that we set the fees by resolution? Or do you like to have those fees for alcohol ordinances codified in the ordinance? That's something that I could make a change to in between, um, this meeting and the next.
Steph, if, uh, what, okay, so they, currently they're in ordinance. What is the advantage of that versus having them in a resolution?
Um, so flexibility. Um, Alderman or Mayor Janser and and council, the advantage would be flexibility one way or the other. So fees are easier to be changed if they're set by resolution because they'll only take one reading, um, of the council. I believe our, uh, airport fees are set that way. I think some of our public works fees are also set that way. And generally, what that resolution, resolution will say is, here's our fees for these particular services or licenses or permits. And then this fee resolution will stay in effect until repealed by the council, or it will stay in effect for a year. Here, I would recommend just setting the fees until changed by further order of the council. And that way, they would remain in effect. And if you want to change them, we could put them on a council meeting and you can amend them up, down, however you want to change it. Whereas when they're in an ordinance, as the council knows, it takes two readings to change the fees. So just something to, for the council to consider.
Alderman Blessam.
Yeah, thank you. Steph, are are there any, do we have any other fees set in ordinance that you can think of?
Not, I'm sure there's some here, um, but not off the top of my head. I'm, I'm struggling to think of one.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move that we remove all of the fees from the ordinance and handle it through a resolution with the budget process each year.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mayor Jans-
Oh.
Mayor Janser, I just did a, I just did a quick search and I am seeing there's license fees for taxi cab drivers that are still in ordinance. So there's a few, there's a few that are in here, but it's generally shifted towards doing these fee resolutions.
Okay, thank you for that information. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second, uh, let's record our votes.
The motion passed unanimously. I just don't.
Okay. Mr. Alderman Hayes.
Also on item number eight and nine, hotel motel. What's the difference of those or why are they separated? Just a question.
Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you. When I, when I went through them, it it is basically capacity because motel is generally smaller. So the number of rooms, I think a hotel is a hundred or more, and a motel is down to fifty or thirty. That's the biggest difference that I saw.
They're still, still both eligible for a licensing. So why couldn't they, I mean, there just seems to be a lot of categories that could be condensed down to, to.
They were lodgings, I mean, for rent, yeah. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, just to give some insight into that, that was where, that's where this committee, the Alcohol Ad Hoc Committee, got hung up, was all these license types. How do we combine them? How do we, we had some in there that don't even exist anymore, aren't utilized. That's why the conversation of the cap came into place. You know, if we remove the cap, if there is an interest in removing the cap, which was kicked to council, kicked up to council, you know, that was, that was one of the items that wasn't worth getting into the weeds on, on all the different types of licenses and combining them and removing them. So, so again, I I do believe when we bring this back, depending on how the next item goes, there will be work to be had in the license types at this body, so.
Uh, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Janser. Um, that is something that we discussed kind of at length with city staff. And I do have another draft of this ordinance kind of queued up where I kind of took a look at that. And I think we could consolidate these significantly, possibly down to like even maybe ten or eleven different types of licenses. And those are two of them where I don't know that we need to have, um, specific licenses for hotels and motels. I think we could have regulations in place for if you have a license for a hotel or a motel. But for purposes of this specific draft, I didn't want to change too much, um, in the license types. But I'd be happy to, um, I, if the council wants to entertain a motion to consolidate those two types for now, I'd be happy to do that, um, in the next draft that comes before the council.
City Attorney, is there a difference in fee structure between hotels and motels?
I beli- believe there is.
Or maybe the City Clerk knows that answer, I don't.
One moment, let me pull it up.
If I may speak, uh, the licenses both require a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee.
Okay, so it's, there's no difference in money.
And it's another six hundred and twenty-five for beer. So if they want to do a, a, a full license, it's three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. I believe the, the main difference is just how many units there are. And and like Steph said, we could probably, I I don't believe I do a separate motel license for any specific, um, right now. So I I don't think it's a used license at this point.
Okay. Alderman Hayes.
I'd like to make a motion that we condense in our next draft, condense down the eighteen items down to what would be compatible, uh, what's needed.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just a point of clarification, are we consolidating just hotel and motel? Or do you want me to bring back, um, my proposal where I think we could consolidate others down further as well?
Can be consolidated.
Okay.
Did you understand, he said, he said whatever can be consolidated, basically. Whatever makes sense to do. Okay, everybody understand the motion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
All right, we're still on this, working on the draft motion. Any, uh, anything else? Okay, let's vote on the overall motion to send it back to staff and, uh, with the changes that we've identified.
Alderman Hayes, did it pop up for you?
Yeah.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay. All right, um, that takes us on to item six point six, which is the alcohol ordinance liquor license cap discussion. What are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor. I I, I guess I see like fifteen business owners here that probably came to talk to us tonight. And if we're going to discuss this, which affects them, I think we need to open a public hearing real quick. So if they want to come up and talk, they can talk while we're talking about it, instead of after we've talked about it, during public appearances. So I'd make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on that.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we, we have a whole lot of, uh, liquor license holders in the audience. We have some legal counsel that I believe represent some of them. And so this is a public hearing. You are welcome to come up and, um, uh, visit about uh, how you believe this, uh, liquor license cap, uh, thing should go. For those of you who haven't been following this, uh, and out in the public, I just want to state that, um, there was, that this, the recommendations, um, uh, came from a, uh, committee that was, um, that reviewed the, uh, liquor license ordinance and, um, this issue to, um, about the caps on full liquor licenses was central to their discussion. And what we, what came back as a recommendation from the committee was a multiple choice question. We got four alternatives as opposed to a specific recommendation. And those are the ones that are, that are in the, um, write-up that we are looking at. And, uh, so, um, And, uh, so, um, that's where we are. That's what, what we're looking at is these four possibilities, um, that came out of that, uh, liquor ordinance committee. Um, and thinking about a little history, uh, we, this is kind of a little bit of, um, deja vu all over again, as they say, in that, um, we kind of went through this same process, uh, a number of years ago. And, um, at that time, ultimately, um, did not remove the caps and, uh, but the discussion has come back up again. So, um, so with that, uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, I would just ask that, uh, if, if you want to come up and speak, you're certainly welcome. In the interest of time, if you, uh, are able to, um, avoid maybe repeating at length some points that somebody else has made. And just sort of state your position, that's certainly appreciated, but you're welcome to come up and, and visit with us, um, before we move forward on this item. So, public hearing.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. Uh, thanks for hearing us out. Um, so I had some stuff written down, um, and a lot of it was on six point five. But we kind of, you guys kind of touched on it that they're, they're linked together a lot, and that's some of our confusion. From, from our point of view, um, everything's kind of open-ended right now with some confusion. And in, in retrospect, I don't know if splitting the issues up, um, were, were the best idea. The, one of the problems, again, you guys kind of touched on this, if the cap stays by chance, but, uh, the ordinance changes pass or vice versa. And in those changes, a new off-sale license is created. What does that mean for the existing off-sale stores? Is there a limit on those? Is there a price attached? What happens to the seven of them? Do they go back to the city? They get put up for bid? Um, or do the off-sale stores try to sell their old licenses and purchase an off-sale license from the city? The point is like both, both items are intertwined. And it's just kind of an example of our confusion. I can speak for myself, I'm not the sharpest, uh, knife in the box, but it's been, it's been difficult to try to state our case with them separated. And, and we were for them being separated, I want to make that clear, but it's, there has been some, some confusion. So a couple of these things, again, were on the last item, but, for example, in Grand Forks, uh, the town that apparently we're trying to, to emulate, they, they don't have a cap, but they charge seventy thousand dollars for our similar retail license. Their supper club license is thirty-two thousand dollars for less than a hundred seats, seventy grand, excuse me, for more than a hundred seats, as well as other requirements like being required to order a food item, having the kitchen open at all times while operating, and no gaming, gaming machines and so on. Fargo, the same license type we have, is a hundred and fifty thousand, supper clubs are one hundred thousand. Bismarck just made four more licenses available of our type, the full retail, and the minimum bid was two hundred grand. The other finds, the other things we find concerning are the proposed changes and the changes that have been made in the past regarding supper club licenses. We all justified to ourselves paying these, these high premiums for these retail liquor licenses because within the ordinances, we were afforded a few unique advantages, such as being able to transfer our license to cater an event. Nowadays, all license types are transferable and we strongly disagree with that. Uh, supper clubs already operate, you know, basically as bars already. Anybody can go to a, you know, the ever-growing number of bar restaurants in town that hold the supper club license, sit at a bar top, have a drink, order food, or don't. Enjoy the bar atmosphere, gamble, play music on a jukebox while being able to bring your kids. Some of the new proposed changes in the ordinance want to make the already lax restrictions on supper clubs comparative to other places, cities. And, and make them even more lax than the RDR, while at the same time devaluated, devaluing our license type further. The proposed changes, uh, they want to be like Grand Forks and remove the cap, but doesn't want to adopt any of the other rules or laws that they have in place, and it kind of seems like cherry picking. I ask again, like what advantage do we have? We're portrayed as a protected class. And we feel like it's the opposite. We serve a smaller portion of the population, a smaller selections of goods, and we paid extra to, to do so. Essentially, these are nightclub and adult-only licenses. In my opinion, Minot doesn't need any more of these. And nobody I know or heard, or have heard from is, is clamoring for more. I stated in front of the council before that caps or financial barriers of entry are the norm in this heavily regulated space. They aren't intended to protect us from competition. They are in place all over the place to help shape the kind of city we want to live in. If caps are anti-free market, then so is every rule, law, and regulation that we have to abide by that other businesses don't, such as age requirements or limited hours of operation. Lots of us do feel like we're being stabbed in the back. In good faith, we made significant investments and took a huge risk investing in the city of Minot. I hear from the council about not wanting to pick winners and losers. And I feel like the city is and has been doing for a while, and our, from our point of view, we have not been on the winning side. That's all I got.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President Blessam, other members of the council, um, city manager, city attorney. Uh, I'm Deb Hofarth from Pringle and Herkstead here in town. I represent the Magic City Retail Beverage Dealers. It's fourteen retail liquor licenses holders here in the city of Minot. And, uh, that group as a whole is asking you to maintain the current license cap. The position is pretty straightforward. We think removing the cap would destroy substantial investments that those business owners made in good faith, cost the cities millions of revenues, and create the kind of regulatory instability that we think actually discourages investment in the city instead of encourages it. So first of all, I want to talk about, um, the property interest issue. These licenses aren't just pieces of paper. I mean, they, they're more than a permit. They recognize as, uh, property interest. These license are valuable assets that banks finance, uh, the businesses buy and sell. They have an established value. Um, market value that's been built over decades, um, by many of these businesses. Banks can and do hold a security interest as a new license. They can foreclose on these licenses. Um, that's been done. Um, so that really demonstrates the economic value that, uh, these license holders hold. And these were purchased at significant costs with reasonable expectations based that the regulatory framework within the city would remain stable. And so changing the rules destroys those investments they made in good faith. And, and I want to be clear, no one in my group is arguing that they don't want competition. They, they compete every single day pretty successfully. You can look at the investments made, um, at many of these establishments, um, adding rooftop applications, tearing down buildings, building new buildings, and, and, you know, employing people within, within the city. Their work, they're working hard, they use their smart business practices, um, to expand their operations, better serve their customers, and, um, want to see Minot developed. And so they're just seeking fairness as opposed to sudden destruction of the value of the license they purchased. Fiscal responsibility. Earlier this year, Marketplace Foods kind of did a financial analysis, right? Um, we, we agree with how those numbers shook out for the thirty-one license holders. But let's just assume right now, today, the city would have two licenses to sell. If you, if you look at these with the various options, right, one is retain the cap. Um, under the current systems, um, that would go up, we assume, under auction, probably garnering between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars for those two, um, those two licenses at an auctions proceeding. Under option two, which just removes the cap and sets the fee at five thousand dollars, you would get ten thousand dollars total, right? And so that's three hundred and ninety thousand dollars less than the current system. The third option, the, what is the black proposal, that would generate, um, approximately, I'm going to use the loan number of a hundred thousand dollars, that would give you two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And option four, uh, what is referred to as the Pittner proposal, that would again be ten thousand dollars in revenue. Marketplace Foods previously talked about the, the cost of that with the payout to the existing holders at twenty-five thousand dollars. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would be paid out of the city's economic development fund. The twenty-year wa, twenty-year fee waiver would cost about three point one million dollars. So all in all, the total cost of the Pittner proposal is nearly three point eight seven five million over the next twenty years. Whereas the current black proposal and keeping the caps, um, really is a little more revenue neutral. So when, at a time when we're looking for resources to fund infrastructure improvements, public safety initiatives, and essential services, we don't think the city should be giving up these lost revenues. And, and we're not facing a unique situation here. Uh, Tony Mueller just kind of talked through those, right? Fargo kept its caps, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a license that's similar to the current retail liquor license here in North Dakota. Grand Forks has no cap, but it's almost seventy, it's sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for its class one license, significantly more than that five thousand dollars that's currently proposed. Bismarck has maintained its cap, but it's updated its calculation for the methodology for determining the population. And in just this last month, in September of twenty twenty-five, it required a minimum bid of two hundred thousand dollars for their class D license. So I think the pattern is pretty clear here that these licenses are valuable, the city should keep them. Uh, we also think that eliminating the cap harms economic development. If they're only five thousand dollars, no rational buyer is going to purchase an existing license from anybody, right? How are they going to sell their bars, right? It's not just the building where this, where these, where the, where the blue sky comes from, right? It's, it's these licenses that they have for these retail listing, retail liquor licenses. But what does that tell prospective business owners, right? It tells them our regulatory framework is unstable, that we're willing to change the rules that can wipe out your investments, um, entirely. And so that becomes a barrier of its own entry to benefit, uh, our economic development. So we'd ask that you maintain the current license caps in license one, it protects investments, it generates revenues for city services, maintains stability, um, and it follows what the other cities are doing along and, and other policy challenges. So, and also just one net, and I didn't see this in the proposed changes, but if they're going to include language about legacy licenses, I don't see that was defined anywhere in there. So if we mention legacy licenses within the ordinance, I think that should have a definition. So, thank you very much. If I have any questions, I can take those.
Any questions for attorney? Okay. Just because of the audience, could, could we have a, like a raise of hands of those of you who are in that organization? Just so we kind of, the council kind of sees, sees that. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. The public hearing continues. Um, we are talking about, uh, the caps on...
Evening. My name is Jessica Klein. I am here from Olson and Burns Law Firm in Town. I'm here on behalf of Marketplace Liquors. Um, I, I previously provided a memo, and so I'm not going to go through the math or all of that again. I know all of you have seen it and, and our participation in some of the ad hoc committee meetings. Um, but a concern that wasn't addressed in my prior memo was the issue of the remaining, um, of removing the retail liquor license from the off-sale requirement. Um, at this point, it's hard to know really, and, and not unclear on how to advocate. For my client, uh, Marketplace Liquors, um, primarily is a liquor store where they're, they're not serving liquor, but they do have to have a liquor license in order to have that off-sale piece. Um, it, it's unclear what the, the future would look like, uh, for off-sale under the, the current redraft. Um, our ability to advocate again is, is a little difficult because we don't know what that looked like. And as such, um, at this point, my client's just asking that you would maintain the current caps. Thank you.
Okay. We're still in public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak, uh, to this item during the public hearing?
Janser, council, um, I'm Sabrina. Um, I guess one of the factors that I think about, um, I've worked in this industry for twenty years now. And it is my, basically, my job to keep the liquor license for my business, right? We have to withhold the laws that you guys put in set and the state sets up for us, um, serving minors, you know, um, making sure we're closed at two, things like that. And I can tell you that it is a lot harder to break those laws if it, the license is worth two hundred thousand dollars versus five thousand dollars. Um, and anybody can open one, and that might be something you guys need to take in advance too, because I know when I talk to my staff, and I'm like, I'm not going to go have that conversation with my owner, right? And we do work in a business that it would be really, people would take advantage of that because it's five thousand dollars. Um, so I just thought that needed to be brought up. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Wright, uh, Arnie's two point oh, twelve, Third Street Southeast, Minot. Mr. Mayor, Alderman. Um, I'm not going to talk about the cap because you know how I feel about the cap. We haven't talked about that. But I want to go back to the six point five, and I think that's, um, where there's a lot of issues. And, um, I went through, what I, well, I tried to go through the, um, the papers. That was presented, the eighty pages of papers. Not ten, not five, not thirty, but eighty. Eighty pages of cross-outs. And it made no sense. Some of it was doubled, some of it was tripled. Uh, in one spot, you said this, another spot, they said this, about the same thing. And so need to go through it. I'd like to ask the council, how many of you actually went through and read, read the eighty pages? And looked at the different things that they're actually changing? They're not changing one thing in ordinance, they're changing the whole ordinance. Everything. Everything. So I would ask as people who represent me and the businesses here in town, that you look at it and you look at it clearly, and not just go by what is put before you, okay? Because you're, you're dealing with people's lives, not just ours, but future people that are coming into this community. I would ask that, of course, you reject the license cap proposal. And, uh, please put a halt to the rush to change this ordinance. Right now, we don't need the changes. Minot's never going to grow if we keep, let's say this in a nice way. Allowing the Minot elite to get what they want. Okay, I'm a, a lot of people are not going to appreciate what I say, but I'm going to say it like it is. Because somebody has to at the end of the day. Because it seems like everybody's scared to say what really happens in Minot. I started looking at this stuff and I am disappointed. In the last years since two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, one just came up before. You've whittled away at our liquor license. You let John Lackaduck have a liquor license in a closet. You let Exgoth, who has the same liquor license as me, have children's birthday parties. You can't control what you got, and you want to add more. You're not, you're not even aware of what's going on, but yet you want to add more. There's, we're, we're not, I'll say this. Supper club license, if you change what they're wanting to do in the supper club license, you just diluted our license anyway. You've been diluting them time after time after time. When you give people, uh, the ability to sell liquor and, or beer and wine at a cookie store, and I don't have a problem with these, these businesses, but this, the council has just, how do you say it? Just went along with everybody, what, what people wanted to do. Now look at the Renaissance Zone. If the Renaissance Zone, and I'm in the Renaissance Zone, okay? I own two buildings in the Renaissance Zone. So I'm speaking some, from somebody that owns buildings in the Renaissance Zone. There's no, we have no limits down there. We can have a supper club, doesn't have to be a hundred and fifty people. Guys, you got to make it even playing field if you want to have people come play. If you want people to move into Minot, you got to get the taxes down, you got to get it to where we can actually live here. Instead of moving to Burlington or Surry or somewhere else. Do you realize that we are close to Minneapolis in our, in what we pay for stuff? We're Minot, North Dakota. We're forty-five minutes from Canada. We're a rural America. But yet we're, we're, we've got prices of Minneapolis. This is crazy. We need to grow organically, and we need to put aside the... We need to grow organically, and we need to put aside the, the favoritism. I do not want to have to run for council to get things done in this city. I want the people on the council to be fair to everybody, not just to those that they think can get things done, because there's a lot of us that can get things done that you don't even know about. So I request that you go back to the six point five, and you look at a lot of it, not just one or two things, because there's a lot of things in there that are issues. And I've just scanned it. Golf clubs, different golf, golf clubs, different things like that.
Hi, my name is Lori Olson. I'm from the Capri Bar, and this is going to be a little all over the place since I crossed out a lot of things that everybody already went over. As a city council, if you're not aware, Minot isn't growing, it's slowing. And in fact, that, that, that we're even here discussing, discussing, taking off the caps on liquor license is, it just shows a serious lack of foresight. That is progress, that isn't progress, it's financial irresponsibility and complete recklessness. Small businesses are struggling and workers are hard to find. Leadership should focus on stabilizing what we have, not flooding the market with more of a controlled substance. Opening the market to allow more controlled substance in the city shows complete lack of awareness. Our community already has clear signs it's not being controlled. And if you don't know that, you clearly don't understand the can of worms you're opening. There is no credible research showing that adding more bars boosts a city income. Alcohol is a government-related substance, not a coffee shop. It's a product that is, that, it's a product, and treating it like a free trade is foolish. It's a government-regulated for a reason. You don't understand, you don't, I'm sorry, you don't grow revenue by giving away what credited. Real leadership means supporting local businesses and growing only as the population grows. That's just common sense. Voting yes on this will open up the city to a lawsuit. If you lose, the city ends up repaying millions of dollars of more tax money to refund bars owners of covering, to cover their legal fees. How that sits with the committee, with the community, you're supposed, how, how is that going to sit with the community, committee you're supposed to represent? I'm sorry. If any of you had even done basic research on alcohol consumption, you'd know it's declining among younger generations. And not only are they, they drinking less, they're surely not moving to Minot. So adding more bars isn't adding growth, that's just denial. And if you, if any of you had any, had even done basic research on hospitality industry, you'd already know that Minot is far above the recommended number of establishments over our population side. Minot is already far past sustainable market. Oversaturation doesn't create growth, it creates closure, job loss, and empty storefronts. And then there's the Pitner repayment option, sold as, sold as the repayment option, plan. But in reality, it's an illusion. It costs the city more money to promote free trade in a substance that's already overabundant, overabundant, offering zero growth or benefit to our city. Waiving renewal fees isn't repayment, it's financial delusion. If the city wants fairness, repayment should go directly to the current license holders immediately, because in twenty years, most of us won't own our bars, and some may not even be here. Real leadership supports not short-term political favors for friends. There are licenses available that aren't even being bought. So why we are, why are we fixing something that isn't even broken, and could end up costing the city an enormous amount of money and your credibility as leaders? So again, for what? To help friends who can't or simply won't take the financial risk? We did? Be strong leaders, not the blind leading the blind. Vote no, save this city a massive headache, and show both the community and the government that you understand what it means to responsibly control a, a controlled substance. Also, there are liquor licenses available, and they're not attached to buildings. So if somebody wants to go and buy a liquor license, go to one of those liquor licenses that are for sale, negotiate it, the owners can choose to sell the liquor license, and sell the liquor, the building, or rent the building out. This whole proposal is just complete ignorance. And you need to think of what benefits your community, the police force. This brings nothing to Minot. It, it offers absolutely zero economic growth. If you can think of one positive thing that this would do for our community, I would love to hear it. Anybody got anything positive? That's what I thought.
We're continuing with a public hearing regarding changes to the liquor ordinance.
Mayor, council members, Adam Hoffman with the Original Bar. I am in a little different standpoint right now with myself because I have my bar up for sale. And this has caused some issues when dealing with clients or somebody that's possibly looking at purchasing my business, because right now where we're at, they're not sure, or nor am I, where that liquor license sits in value, whether it's what it has been before, whatever median assessed value, want to go, just throwing out a number, one hundred and fifty, you know? As of right now, when I talk to people about possibly purchasing my business, and when I include the price of that license in there, it has hindered moving forward, because they are not sure what it's going to be worth, and nor am I. So that is kind of outside for me where I'm looking at right now. I am on my way out of the business, and I do feel for my fellow liquor license holders because this was something that we looked at as initial investment, as something when I sold, that I was going to take, you know, as part of moving on, retirement for my children and whatnot. So, I just want to put that out. Thank you for your time.
We're still in public hearing on changes to the liquor ordinance. One last call. Public hearing on the liquor ordinance. Seeing, seeing no one come forward at this time, I think we'll declare the public hearing portion closed, and we'll take it back to the council here.
I think we need a motion.
I think we need a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and move forward with option number one to retain the cap as is.
Okay, moved and seconded discussion. Alderman, bless them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank the license holders for coming tonight. It's always good to hear from the public, especially those that are directly affected by major decisions that we make. This, this decision, as far as I can tell, goes back well before I was born. I've lived in the city most of my life, and it's, it's been this way the entire time that I've been alive. One of the things I want to be clear about, I've, I've said throughout that I am a proponent of getting rid of the caps. And I will guarantee you, there is no one on this earth that cares more about the impacts that alcohol has on our families and our community. Those that know me know exactly why that is. There are very real impacts and things that happen related to alcohol. So I don't, I don't take the positions that I take lightly, at all. I'm not looking for additional revenue to the city. I think I've been very clear about that as well. There isn't a darn thing that I will do solely because it'll bring in more tax revenue to our coffers. That's the last thing we need. We need to be focused on reducing what we're doing to impact our tax burdens, not increasing what we're paying in. As far as the caps go, to me, this is a basic fairness issue. I've said repeatedly that a business went up in the building next to mine that does the exact same thing that we do. They put up a sign next door and said, I'm doing tax returns. They didn't even have to tell the city, let alone get a license or pay a fee. They just did it. I have no say in that, and I welcome the competition, and away we go. We need to do a better job and make sure that we take care of our clients. So at the end of the day, that's how I look at the caps. Yes, there are extenuating circumstances with a liquor license. That's why I'm fine with the fees being, whether it's thirty-one, twenty-five, five thousand, whatever that is. That helps to offset some of the real costs that occur because of our police force, our EMTs, anybody else that needs to respond, or, or, or needs to take care of this industry. So while I understand all the headaches and all the things that go with it, I think saying that, well, all the other cities do it this way, or we've got to have these big hindrances to entering the market, I think they're just bunk. I think we can choose to do it different, I think we can choose to make Minot different, and to get some innovative ways of looking at things to come out. So, I don't take what I'm talking about at all lightly, and I want to make sure everybody understands that. I understand the real problems that come from alcohol, and if you want to talk to me about that afterwards, I'm happy to do so. At the same time, this is a core principle that I look at about, about our freedom to, to participate in markets and how that works. And so, you know, hopefully that kind of gives you a little bit of a summary. I'm going to vote no on this. I would love to have the opportunity to at least vote on a proposal that makes a change and heads us in a different direction, or at least here a proposal, but the first motion we got is on leaving it as is, and we'll see where that shakes out and go from there.
Further discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. So, I appreciate what you said, Mike, I do, and I know that your comment fairness, it's about fairness, right? And, and I appreciated you saying that. Most of these people in this audience that came in here to talk to us tonight have paid well over a hundred thousand dollars for a liquor license to operate and run a business that they have busted their butts to do for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Like you said, this goes back longer than most of us sitting up here. But, we told them, when they bought that license from us, that this is what it's going to be, this is the cap, because this is how we want to do things in the city of Minot. That was a promise we made with them when they bought that, when they paid those big monies from us. And so, you know, when we sit here and say, hey, it's about fairness, I, I get it, but you didn't have to buy a two hundred thousand dollar license to open up a, a tax business in Minot, right? I mean, they had to buy the license to do that. So, I, and, and I get where you're coming from about the fairness of, of letting somebody just come in and do their thing, but in this case, we made a promise to these people when we sold them that liquor license, that your value will stay there, because we're going to continue to maintain, this is what we want in our city, and this is how we want our city to move forward. On top of that, you know, we talk about, like, I, I, and I'm not saying Mike said that tonight, or anybody else said that tonight, but that, like, they're scared of competition. These people aren't scared of competition, but they, they have worked these businesses for years, making their families' lives and everything from them. And so for us to come in and say, oh, you know what, we're going to open this up, and anybody that wants to do this now, you know, these guys survived COVID, they've survived inflation, they've survived the, the shortage of workers, and they're still here. And what we're going to do by opening up the cap is dilute that, right? Because just by, by adding more liquor licenses, we're not going to add more customers. We're taking the same customer base and just spreading it out amongst everybody now, and even more licenses. So, you know, I, like, I don't think oversaturating the city of Minot, North Dakota with forty-seven thousand some odd people is, is the right thing to do. We've lost, that's another thing, we've lost almost three thousand people since twenty nineteen. Now, right now, if you take our thirty-three licenses, I believe that we have the retail liquor licenses, and multiply that by fifteen hundred, we should have forty-nine thousand some odd people in the city of Minot for those required licenses. But we haven't taken away a license, you know? There's three licenses available for sale right now in the city of Minot. We're trying to fix a problem that isn't a problem. Like, and, and I don't forget which, which one that came up here and talked, which one of the business owners, but if they, somebody wants a liquor license, you can go to the businesses that have them for sale, and I believe, as Michaela and I were talking earlier, the epic one is going to be coming back to us at some point. There's four licenses that are potentially for sale. Now, I, I get it, it's not fun to do, but go to those business owners and make them a, make them an offer they can't refuse. And then take that liquor license and put it wherever you want, and let the business owner maybe sell their building, or rent it out, or do whatever. It just, I don't know, I, I can't get behind increasing the liquor license cap because we don't need it. We have licenses available, and, and so I guess that's where I'm going to be on this.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you. I've, I've gone so many different directions on this, except one, and this is the only motion that I will vote for. I will say that upfront. And for me, I, I believe in free market, but the business end of it and everything else really isn't it for me. This is a controlled substance. Like pharmacy, like drugs, we have controls on them, and we have controls on them for a reason. It's not about revenue, and it's also not being like another city. I did read our ordinance and the changes that are in there, and I read Dickinson's, I read Fargo's, I read Williston's, and I read Bismarck's, and I read Grand Forks. And I don't want to be any of them. I always want to be Minot, North Dakota. I don't want to be compared to the other ones. There's so many things that I went through, and it came down to one thing. I have a stat from twenty twenty-four. In Grand Forks, North Dakota, there were two hundred and twelve DUI arrests. In Fargo, North Dakota, there was a hundred and eighty-seven. Now I can't tell you that that came from the cap, because I also do know in some talking that I did too, that they had, they had extra enforcement that year on DUI. But you've got a town that is half the size of another one, and you've got over double? I, I just, I, I can't, I can't get there, just, to me, it's public safety. There's so many things that I've heard from the business owners, and some of it I can get there, some of it I can't. I truly, I don't believe that we're going to have more alcohol use in Minot if we get rid of this cap. We're not. There's only so many people here, there's so many, so many people that visit bars and all that. But one thing that I looked at and I thought about, maybe in Grand Forks, because they probably have more, or there's no cap, maybe those people are going from bar to bar more so than anywhere else. I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know where the numbers come from, but I look at that, and that stands out to me, and I just, I, I can't do it. I just can't.
Alderman Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that you and I might be the only two that actually voted on this in twenty eighteen, and we heard very, very, very similar stories and pleas and testimonies. And when this came up as an option for the committee to even meet, I think I voted no, because my thought process hadn't changed. And that was based on the fact that as a city, we required liquor license holders to pay for a very expensive liquor license. It was our requirement, we made them do that. None of us voted on that initial requirement, but we've carried through on it. And the only way to lift the caps and right that wrong, and, and it might be a wrong, I am not sure, but the only way to right that wrong is to pay them for what those licenses are worth. And that is taking tax dollars to do that, and I refuse to do it.
Further discussion. Alderman Blessam.
Um, it, uh, you know, I, I appreciate that thought process, and actually, I, I agree just about completely, except that I am willing to do it. Um, when the city creates a wrong, we have to be willing to, to get ourselves out of it. And so, you know, we may not hear the other proposals. We may not hear ways of thinking about it that may be palatable to some. Um, because I, you know, I, I'm sensing that this is going to pass as is, and we're going to continue with the status quo. So I do think, though, that it is a wrong, and the way to rectify that wrong is to fix it and then take care of those that are impacted by it. And we won't hear those proposals if we vote yes on this proposal.
Further discussion. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to fall in line, um, somewhat with Alderman Blessam on this. I would like to take a crack at some of the other proposals. Um, I prefer the black proposal, to be honest with you. I believe it, it, it provides, as was stated, uh, tonight by Attorney Hoffarth, a somewhat of a, um, you know, a revenue neutral, um, to keeping the cap in place. It allows a guaranteed value on a license. It, it allows a first right of refusal for anyone looking to come into the market. And again, I, I, I don't, I, I don't believe, like Alderman Samuelson said, that there would be more alcohol consumption. You know, we never, we never think twice about when a new gas station opens up, um, with tobacco sales. Is there going to be more kids smoking? You know, we, we just kind of a rubber stamp approval. You know, there are, we, we, we keep citing, there's four licenses for sale. Those are ta- those are attached to existing businesses. Um, I personally do not consider those for sale as, as they are. Um, like, um, uh, Mr. Hoffman said, attached to the asking price of the building, which is completely understandable. You know, when you look at some of the, the, uh, the buildings that are for sale that are, have liquor licenses, one's assessed for seven hundred and forty nine thousand, it's listed for one point four million. One's assessed at eight hundred and sixty eight thousand, listed for one point four million. Another one is assessed at one point three three million, and it's listed for one million nine hundred and ninety nine thousand. Is that the value? Is the difference the value of the liquor license versus the real property? I, I don't know. I, I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I'm not saying that those values aren't, aren't in line with what they, they should be asking. But again, I, I, I stand by what, what I had said when I, when I was appointed to be the chair of the committee was that I'm going to try to maintain the most pro-growth, pro-entrepreneurship, free market policy. And I believe going the direction of the black proposal maintains that. It maintains a, 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 a value for any, anyone that holds a license. Um, but allows someone with, with an idea to take the same risk that these individuals took, um, when they decided to open their business. A large upfront cost with the opportunity to fail or succeed. So again, I will vote no on this with the hope that we can look at one of the other proposals.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
I, I just want to clarify one thing. I did not say that there was going to be more alcohol use or anything. I'm just worried about the numbers.
Further discussion. Alderman Hayes.
I would have to agree with Alderman Pittner on the black proposal. It keeps a monetary amount that, uh, supports the existing licensees that their value hasn't dropped, whether it's a hundred and twenty five thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and also with the concern of opening up the cap on it. Uh, if we don't, and those licenses go away in six months or whatever it may be, right now, we don't, a cap is fine because we got a surplus of licenses. But six months down the road, what if we get a Costco, a Sam's Club, a Kroger that comes to Minot and wants to do business? That off-sale license is going to be critical to one of those businesses. And, uh, but I would say at this point, I would have to vote no with, uh, with the proposal.
Alderman Fuller.
Um, and I appreciate that, Mike. One thing I'll just say is we can leave the cap in place and still do the off-sale licenses. Right? It doesn't have to be that proposal. When we're talking about the liquor license ordinance portion, when they bring it back to us, we can create the specific off-sale license right there and retain the cap. And it, it hurts nobody or does nothing, and it opens up that because those off-sale licenses would not be capped with population.
They are not part of the thirty three that are allotted?
There's seven.
City Clerk.
Um, I can offer a little bit of maybe clarification from, um, some comments made in the public hearing and, and some of your questions. So the city right now has somewhere between, and I'm sorry, I didn't look this up beforehand. I think there's between thirty one and thirty three licenses for a retail liquor beer and wine. There are at least, I think, seven businesses that operate just as off-sale, but are required to hold the retail beer, liquor beer and wine license. Um, it was the committee's suggestion that if they don't remove the cap, if the cap does not get removed, an off-sale license be added. Now, by adding that license, that would not be a cap license. It would not be a transferable license. But I would also say, and this might, um, help one of the lawyers that came up, that the off-sale operating businesses right now that own retail liquor beer and wine would not be required to get an off-sale license. They own their retail liquor beer and wine. And they will, they can own that until they want to sell it. And if they want to sell it, then they would have the option to get an off-sale license. The city, I don't believe, would be able to require them to move from the retail liquor beer and wine over to the off-sale. But the, creating an off-sale license would allow for, like you said, a Costco, Sam's Club that want to do off-sale to get a license. Does that help?
Alderman Hayes.
Yeah, with the, uh, problem I have, and I don't know the control Minot has, is if a person has a, a liquor license, they aren't using it, haven't used it for years. What's a mechanism? Can they just hold that and sell it to whoever they want?
Um, so the council is going to be seeing a, a license similar to that. So Epic, um, purchased a license, I believe in twenty twenty one. Um, they had gotten extensions through July one of twenty twenty five, and after some internal conversations, um, we have to go through the ordinance process to bring it back to council after we send them a letter that they're in violation of their license because you have to. And I don't know, Dale's over there somewhere. He might be able to help, but there is part of our ordinance that says you must sell alcohol in a three hundred and sixty five day period. So they're in violation of that, which the city council, um, would have the right to revoke that license. And then that license would come back to the city.
Thank you. That clears it.
Further discussion. City Clerk.
I'm going to make one more comment. Um, Melissa, I totally hear you during your public, um, comment. The, I believe the city attorney and I have mentioned before, this is a huge ordinance to go through, correct? Um, and we welcome any opinions, if you want to have a meeting, if you want to send us an email, any concerns that any of the license holder has with any of the ordinance. It is huge, and there are changes more than just this one piece. And any concerns that you have, we welcome the discussion because like you said, it's huge, and there's a lot to consider. So please let us know if there's things that you would like to talk about for the full ordinance.
Yeah, I, I believe the city attorney noted in her comments earlier that, that, um, this, this was essentially a, I'm going to say, full rewrite of, of the ordinance as opposed to, uh, just wordsmithing or, or tweaking a couple of things. So, um, that, that is certainly a reality, and, um, as, you know, when, in the discussion about six point five on the agenda, um, we are trying to do our work to get it right. And when it comes back to us, we'll look at it again. And if it isn't right, we'll send it back and work it again. So I think, um, uh, that's part of the process, and, uh, sometimes it takes multiple looks to, um, get a document, get an ordinance, set of ordinances uh, and requirements and so forth to where, where it's actually where we need it to be. So.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my, um, motion uh, because there's been some concerns, I guess, about the off-sale licenses. So I would like to amend the motion uh, to say that we approve option one, leave the cap in place, but direct city staff uh, with the rewrite of the ordinance to put in place the off-sale specific license.
Is there a second to that?
Uh, he was the second.
Scott was the second.
Oh, do you want to do it as an amendment?
It's an amendment, and you're doing that as an amendment to the existing motion?
I'm sorry, as an amendment to my existing motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment proposed, uh, moved and seconded to...
No, there wasn't.
Or was it?
Scott originally seconded the motion.
No, but this is a new amendment.
This would be an amendment to the new one. Yeah, I'm sorry. This would be an amendment to the new one.
Okay, do we have a, a second to the amendment motion?
Second.
Alderman Blessam.
Uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of the amendment, not that I'm not in favor of taking a look at an off-sale license because I think that's an important part of this process. But I think we have a lot of work to do other than just saying, go take a look at it. Because as the discussion was going on on off-sale, we, we go down a rabbit hole that gets crazy really quickly because I understand the idea, oh, well, we'll just create a new one. Costco can have that if they want to come in. Well, what does it look like? Is it, is it two hundred thousand dollars? Is it five thousand? Is it, it look like a supper club? I, I, to me, I can't vote for it not knowing in any way what that looks like, especially tying it back to this, because these two things are not tied together.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fuller.
I, I guess, you know, I, that's why I said to direct staff to bring us language to what it would look like. I, and that's all it is. I'm not saying we necessarily approve it, but we bring, have staff bring it to us so we can work through that with six point five or with the ordinance changes as we go forward. So, just to clarify.
Okay. Alderman Hayes.
I know there's a motion on the floor, but I'd like to make a motion that we table it until six point five is completed, or at least to a, uh, to a first reading, just so we can clarify and, and, uh, for example, the, uh, off-sale. You know, because that's a big factor to me for growth in the city is a big, big box store comes in, whether it's one of those three, Kroger, uh, you know, that's a lot of dollars to the city of Minot. And if they're tied up with a liquor license, can't get one. You know, here recently, there was a, a local store that overpaid by quite a bit, double, just so they have that mechanism. And, uh, I would like to just see it further discussion with six point five, and, and as the audience has said, tie it all together.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order, um, to the city attorney or, or Nick, whichever, however you guys want to handle it. We're inside an amendment on a main motion. Is the main, and we got to clarify what the motion to table is. Are we tabling the main motion right now? Are we tabling the amendment? And then once we clarify that, is the motion in order?
Uh, Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam, I, I would, we, the correct understanding would be that we are discussing the motion to amend the original motion. So the motion to table would be to table the motion to amend. So we need to get outside of these other motions before we can table the larger issue, if that's the ultimate goal here.
Okay, so we're, the, so the motion, so Alderman Hayes's motion to table is appropriate to the motion that, uh, was made to, um, add the, uh...
The amendment.
Yeah, to the amendment.
Correct. It does have the effect of, you know, tabling the entire subject, of course, if, if you're tabling the item that's being discussed. Um, but technically, that would, what would have to come back first is the emotion to amend, uh, the original motion.
Okay. Okay, so we're voting on whether or not to table...
I don't have a second.
We don't have a second? Okay.
I'll second it. Not really sure what I'm seconding, but... We are just seconding the discussion on an off-sale only license. That's the only thing we're, we're, we're looking to table?
No, it was the, uh, the whole, uh, proposal, because once it's voted on, then i- it's done.
A, a point of order on that. So just to be clear, even, even if we voted yes and, and did the amendment, then voted yes on the current motion, um, that part's done, and we would be waiting on an ordinance to come back that's going to include off-sale because that motion passed. Right? That's, that's sort of where we sit right now. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on, so, but Nick, you're saying the effect of this tabling tables the entire item, six point six, until we see the six point five ordinance come back?
Uh, Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam, the, the motion to table is to, to table the, would be on the motion to amend, right? Because that's what is being discussed by the council right now.
Yep.
The effect is, though, that the subject can't proceed i- i- until that's addressed, right? You can't proceed any further until you address that motion to amend, because that's what's being discussed. So if you table, uh, where we're at right now, you have, the, the next council agenda, you would come back and uh, have to address the motion to amend the motion that's on the table. Or on, before the council, I'm sorry.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess, I mean, I understand, and I, I, I appreciate the idea that, that this off-sale question relates back into six point five. I guess what I would say is, we've got an awful lot of people here tonight that kind of put their heart and soul into getting to the point that we're at right now. And we're about to tell them, sorry, come back in three or four weeks at a minimum. Um, you know what? As I've said, I don't expect the vote itself to go the way that I would like it to be. But to be honest with you, I think we owe that to them tonight. They came to the podium, they came and talked to us. I'd like to see us give them some resolution here.
Further discussion. So I withdraw my motion. Okay, so that takes care of that. So now, uh, we're back on the original motion.
Mayor, if I may, we're on the motion to amend the original motion. So the motion to amend, uh, is to, uh, add, it's, the motion to amend is to add the, uh, off-sale specific license to the, uh, motion that we retain the cap as is.
Yep, okay. Everybody clear? Alderman Blessam.
Yeah, so the only thing that I would say, Mr. Mayor, again, is that I don't know that we have to do this exact action within this main motion. We can bring back the idea of an off-sale license, which I am absolutely for, and I think we want to address that. I don't know that we have to tie it to retaining the caps. So I'll be voting no on this amendment because I think the main motion is the one that matters right this moment. We're going to have ample opportunity to add the off-sale.
Okay. Okay, so we're, oh, I'm sorry. City Clerk.
Just to kind of maybe give some background too on the off-sale only license, when the committee did talk about it, it, it would be structured similarly to the retail liquor beer and wine, but it would only allow off-sale onto the premise, and it would give them a sampling. Um, because it was brought to our attention that sometimes vendors will, would come in and maybe want to do like a, a two ounce pour or something for somebody to try. So there would be a sampling portion of that too. Um, so that, I believe, is when Steph and I and, and the committee were kind of talking, that would be how we would bring that back for original look.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I could, the other thing to keep in mind, I believe, is that the, the consolidation that we've already discussed, where we've directed city staff to br- to bring that back, is likely to include this concept. And so I, my, my hope would be that our first reading on that ordinance, we would see that off-sale license type come through there as well.
Further discussion. Alderman Pittner.
I, I just want to concur with Mike. I, Alderman Blessam, I will also be voting no because I think, again, we, just even providing that direction to city staff is, is adequate, and I do expect that, to see that in the, in the rewrite, so.
All right. So we have an amendment to vote on now. Uh, if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment.
The motion to amend failed two to five with dissent from Blessam, Janser, Olson, Pittner, and Samuelson.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Then it's time to vote.
The motion passed four to three with dissent from Blessam, Hayes, and Pittner.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are a little over two hours into the meeting. We have a few items left, one of which may take a few minutes. We also have personal appearances coming up, and I would just remind folks who wish to speak during personal appearances that there are speaker cards that are available on the table, and you need to fill out a speaker's card and give it to the city clerk if you wish to speak during personal appearances. The required information is your name and address. The address will be held confidentially, and the topic that you wish to speak on, and just bring that right up here to the city clerk to my left. And with that, we're going to take an eight-minute recess and reconvene at 7:45. All right, if we can get everybody back, we'll come back to business.
Want me to go see if Rob's out there?
He's gone.
He's coming, Michaela.
Michaela, he's coming around the other way. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order, and we are on item 6.7 of the agenda, which is the sales tax ordinance, first penny amendment, property tax relief. And this is a second reading. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded that we approve. Discussion. Alderman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to this motion. I'll read it and also pass this out to my colleagues. I'd like to add one additional statement in the third paragraph. I'd add a line at the end that would say, maybe I'll read the whole thing. I don't know. I'll just read the amendment. Provided that a minimum of $900,000 is allocated to any combination of numbers two and three, which number two is a creation of jobs, and number three is economic development activities. So, my motion would be to add that last statement.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Movement seconded to adopt an amendment to the original motion. Discussion.
If I may add, the reason that I'm making that motion is that we had a lot of discussion during our budget talks related to economic development. And there was, just as was mentioned on our last agenda item, a lot of consternation on those in the community wondering where we were going to land on funding economic development. And based on the will of the people through their vote and through practice that has served to be successful, I believe that it is important that we include these two items in an ordinance so that those discussions do not need to cause as much heartache as they did during our budget series.
Further discussion. Alderman Blessam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote no. I think, you know, so many times over the, now a little over a year that I've been on council, we vote to leave ourselves flexibility and to give ourselves the ability to make changes on the fly. I mean, we decided not to restrict our reserves to a more adequate number simply because someday, sometime, we might need huge piles of money. And so, for me, we gave ourselves the flexibility. If we think spending $900,000 any one year is right, if we think spending all $2.3 million is right, we've got the ability to do both ends of that spectrum. So, for me, there's no reason to restrict our flexibility when that's what this is meant to do, and I think it was a stroke of genius in the mayor's letter.
Further discussion. Alderman Hayes.
I think by earmarking where that money goes to, it's dedicated. Otherwise, it goes in the big black hole and has to be brought out every time something is, Rob's albeit support in the motion.
Further discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
So, I'm going to vote no on this. I don't think a dollar amount belongs in our sales tax ordinance. I don't see a dollar amount anywhere other than the percentages, and I believe that the council has the ability to decide where those funds go on any of the other items, but we're going to pick out just one. And so, I'm going to vote no.
Further discussion. Alderman Pittner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I will also vote no on this. I appreciate the flexibility that's in what was in front of us, but in full transparency, I will also vote no on the second reading of this. To remain consistent, I don't believe, I'll save those comments for after the amendment, I guess.
Further discussion. Okay, then it's time to vote.
The motion to amend failed three to four with dissent from Blessam, Fuller, Pittner, and Samuelson.
Okay, then we're on, back on the original motion. Alderman Pittner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, I will vote no on this to remain consistent. I believe when it comes to what we heard at our budget hearing and from, you know, the investors in our community, the individuals working in economic development within our community, when we see the, you know, the effects of what economic development has done within our community, the projects that these funds, you know, the projects that these dollars fund as far as things within our community, just dumping it all in the general fund, I don't believe is good practice. I'm going to vote no because I believe that we had it right in the initial ordinance, so.
Further discussion. Further discussion. All right, then we're voting on the original motion, 6.7.
The motion failed three to four with dissents from Hayes, Janser, Olson, and Pittner.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
So, can I get a clarification from the finance director and/or the city attorney on what the heck we just did to our budget? I think we've just flushed a whole portion of it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think this would be on the revenue side of the ledger, so the appropriation would still stand. It would then, we would be short, essentially, just about $1 million in general fund in the revenue side. So, then it would be, I guess, our job to either find the cuts to offset that, or it would be additional reserves that would be utilized.
Further questions for the city finance director? Okay. We are now up to item seven, which is personal appearances. Do we have any speaker cards?
I don't believe I see any.
Up there, and I haven't been handed any.
We have one from Billy Gunderson.
Did it turn green, Billy?
Oh, there it did. It's green. At the October 6th city council meeting, I addressed the Minot Transit, particularly referring to the buses, the egregious lack of safety for the drivers, passengers, and the community. It being known that there are egregious mechanical issues, the buses are still sent out to service the community. In addition, I addressed ADA requirements not being met. Otherwoman Olson responded to my concerns on safety and ADA requirements as limitations on the bus. She said, "I don't want Ms. Gunderson's comments to look poorly on our staff because it's not our staff's responsibility. They are working within the confines we set. We made decisions at the dais not to fund buses, to keep older buses running for longer, knowing that repairs are necessary and that there are a lot of miles. Sadly, the responsibility falls on our feet. I appreciate that she has brought it to our attention. It is something that we need to consider in the future, that it is impacting people's lives. I respect that there was a response. However, it is alarming to me and should be to our community that this council services. The concern should not be on how this looks poorly on... The concern should not be on how this looks poorly on staff, but rather the actions taken place by city staff, including the city council. Is city council fully aware of all the mechanical issues with the buses? How often and for how long? Is city council forcing the transit department to send buses out unsafe for bus drivers, passengers, and the community? While I would not have stated that new buses are necessary because the buses are old, I would state that new buses are necessary if the old buses are not being repaired and/or maintained. It should not be said that any responsibility falls at your feet, but rather one that you commit to, to serve the community because you chose to serve. It cannot be because of what I brought to your attention that you are now aware that the buses are impacting the safety of our community. New buses were to have been purchased. At the June 2nd City Council meeting, otherwoman Olson addressed the MPO stating that the city's hands were tied by the federal government, that we asked the questions when we went into this with metropolitan planning organization, if we could opt out. She stated that we can't. I would ask if, she asked if it was to opt out of Minot as a metropolitan area, or if it was to opt out of changing the reclassification of the transit system from rural to urban. Becoming reclassified opened up millions in federal funding for transportation and transit system in Ward County. The city has created its own problems in the midst of seeking solutions for others pursuing federal funding. The city has sought out becoming a metropolitan area for some time. It finally was recognized as such in January 2023 by including strounding populations. The city's peak census population was in 2015, closest to 50,000, but never met the census to become an urban city. While the Census Bureau defines rural and urban areas, agencies can set their own population thresholds for defining urbanized areas for specific program needs. Is this anticipated funding why city council has delayed getting?
Oh, I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we give Billy a minute and a half once it sits back up and running.
Thank you.
Yeah, without objection.
May I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this anticipated funding with city coun, is this anticipated funding why city council is delayed getting new buses aware that the ones in service are not safe, impacting the lives in the community they serve? When the city says that safety is paramount, I question what safety means to the city. When the city addresses integrity and transparency, I question between whom. The buses are only cleaned once a year for hostfest. This year, they were not. The emission from the death causes a person to become unwell while it is common for the bus drivers, they do not notice it anymore. Those that use the transit are treated like second-class citizens. If you know someone that uses the city transit, please use it to become aware, to advocate for the safety of those that do. Thank you.
So having no additional folks with speaker cards to appear at personal appearances, we will move on to miscellaneous and discussion items. Anything, seeing none, we'll move on to liaison reports. I'll start with Alderman Olson.
All right, on September 19th, I helped judge the entries in the Minot North Homecoming Parade. I enjoyed that very much. On September 22nd, participated in the DCB Advisory Board Meeting. Updates on the programs at both the downtown DCB facility as well as the Trinity Health/DCB facility were shared. I think it's important to kind of report that this really is a success story, and it was through the collaboration of the NDR grant, the City of Minot, State of North Dakota, Minot State University Foundation, and Trinity Health, that we have these facilities who are training students to take some very needed positions. So I'm always proud of the collaboration that we saw there and the success of those buildings. September 23rd, I attended the Governor's Reception at the North Coast Fest. On the 25th, participated in the Service Basin Planning Council Loan Review Committee meeting, and then that afternoon, the Central Dakota MPO. As John Van Dyke mentioned earlier, this evening, there is a public hearing coming up on Thursday, October 23rd at 4:30, so if anyone would like to come and visit with us, they are more than welcome. September 30th, along with all of you here, participated in the city manager interviews. And on October 7th, participated in the Service Basin Planning Council Executive Board meeting, and we also have another opportunity to attend the Service Basin Planning Council Annual Meeting and Region 2 Meeting. It's a combined meeting this year, and that is Wednesday, October 22nd. It begins at 5:00, and if you have not already RSVP'd, I would encourage you to give a call or an email to Claire at Service Basin and let her know if you're able to attend.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Olson. Alderman Blessam.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Big events for me. We had a mining commission on aging meeting this past Monday, or last, past Friday, had great reports from everything going on there. I'm continually amazed at the great work that they're doing to provide meals and health services such as foot care and things like that to the seniors in our community and in a wide-ranging area around this community. One of the things that's always crazy to me is that we serve more senior meals out of Minot than they do out of Fargo, which is incredible. And so wonderful work going on over there, and they do it by cobbling together a lot of funds from different areas, the state, the federal government, as well as city funds to make that all happen. So another great report from them. Shoot, 911 Committee is coming up in another few weeks here. We will have another update from there. And I had one other one, and I apologize that it flew out of my mind. Oh, the Transportation Development Plan is underway. So we had our first meeting about two weeks ago, and that will be a series of six meetings of the core team, which I'm a part of, over the course of about 18 months to develop the new transit plan for future use and hopefully help us understand what this new world is going to mean to us, particularly from a funding perspective, but also from an operating perspective. So looking forward to that. There is a, there is a survey out for that, which I believe is on the website. We have three surveys going at once between the MPO, the city survey, and the transit survey. Transit is still out there, I believe, and so I think people can still go take the transit survey.
I think you're correct on that.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Pittner.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, filled in with the MPO meeting as the alternate, Renzone, Renaissance Zone meets this Thursday, Visit Minot Board Meeting, again, continue the work over there with that organization. So nothing too crazy to report. I told my kids I would do this, my wife didn't want me to, but happy anniversary to my wife. So happy to spend it with all of you.
Happy anniversary, and thanks for filling, I think you're filling in for me at the MPO meeting, so my items were covered in my mayor's report, other than to say that there's another MPO meeting coming up this Thursday, and I will be attending that. Alderman Samuelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ward County Planning this last Thursday went a little longer than normal, working on some development out at Byrise Lake, trying to get some stuff solved there. I met the, last week with Chief Frye just to go over what's going on at the PD and talk about their facility a little bit. And it's always nice, I was at the PD swearing-in today, and it's always nice to see us growing in that area. I think since I've been on council, I've only missed one of them, and it's really good to see us filling some positions there.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at the last meeting, I talked about the Disaster Planning Commission that was at the beginning of the month, and then I was supposed to be at the Ward County Planning Commission the other night in the Library Board Meeting, but my wife was out of town and I had a sick little kid at home, so I wasn't able to go do anything, so I apologize.
All right, and Alderman Hayes?
At this point, I don't have any, but I actually got three appointments tonight, so here next meeting, hopefully I'll have some news.
Thank you very much. With that, we are to item number 10.
Second.
Moving seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.